Good morning. My apologies for being very, very late, but had to take care of some executive, executive issues this morning. My apologies. But with that, we're going to get started. So we have a quorum. So we will move forward with our invocation. And to give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Father Liam Murphy of St. Marian Parish. He's here today as the guest of Councilwoman Lazada. I would ask all members and guests to please rise.
Good morning, and let us pray. God of heaven and earth and all creation, God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, God of all your children, first and foremost, we praise you and we thank you. We thank you for the gift of our very lives. We thank you for the gift of this day. We thank you here in this special place for the gift of our city of Philadelphia. We thank you for its rich history. We are grateful and proud to live where we can walk the very streets where this great nation was founded in freedom. And we are eager to continue the struggle for a full, freedomed future for all your children. We thank you for the diversity of cultures, languages, religions, and ways of life that make up our people. It is a reflection of the immensity of your eternal beauty and everlasting creativity. Our hearts are truly grateful to be citizens of the gift that is the city of Philadelphia. At the same time, almost holy one, we come before you with heavy hearts. As you know, in your most compassionate heart, we are in the midst of mourning the death of our heroic brother, Temple Officer, now Sergeant Chris Fitzgerald. Lord, after his time of generous service, may he now sit securely at your banquet table and be served a full portion of your eternal delights. May his family and friends who sit at the table of tears know today your consolation and peace. We mourn the ongoing violence of which Officer Fitzgerald's death was apart, the violence which mars the face of our city of love and destroys so many lives. We weep before the devastation wrought by drug addiction, turning some of our neighborhoods into places of sadness and pain, wounding the dignity of all involved. We are pained by the poverty that affects so many of our families and thwarts the full growth and flourishing of all of our brothers and sisters. Yet with all the wounds of our city and all the challenges we face, we still come before you with grateful hearts. We are grateful that all of us have the opportunity, indeed the vocation, to cooperate with your spirit of justice, goodness, beauty, peace, and love, to heal and unite, to continue creating a city of true and lasting brotherly and sisterly love. And so, good and wise God, we ask you to send your blessing upon the council members of this city as they gather here today. Open their minds and hearts, their bodies and souls, to receive your blessing, to be led by your spirit in all their discussions, deliberations, and decisions. Bless them with an ever ardent desire to work for the good of all. Bless them with a true intention to work together to foster all that unites and binds us together, putting aside all that is partisan, all that is mere stubbornness, all that divides. Grant them true wisdom to find concrete ways to continue building up all that is so good about our city. Give them courage to confront the challenges we face and the audacity to find real and creative life-giving solutions. Give them a real hunger and thirst for righteousness. Give them the capacity to be true peacemakers. Grant them, oh God, as they work together, a true spirit of brotherly and sisterly love. And let that spirit, your spirit, fill this chamber. And then let that spirit, your spirit, contagiously spread beyond these walls and out to every street and alley and parkway and boulevard, to every home and house of worship, to every business and building, to every heart of this great city, so that we may live up to our name, Philadelphia, and be brought always closer together in justice, peace, and lasting love. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you so much, Father. We really appreciate you being here today and giving us some spiritual guidance. The council will be at ease. Thank you. Thank you again, Father. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, February 16, 2023, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 16, 2023, be approved.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second. That the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 16, 2023, then approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that Journal is approved. Our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of members of council, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Thank you, the Chair. Thanks to gentlemen. And the Chair now recognizes Councilman Squilla for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session. Councilman Squilla is not here. Councilwoman Bass, can you please give me...
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with a notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Thank you. It has been moved in probably second. That the legislative matters stated by Councilwoman Bass may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. And our next order of business is communications. And will the clerk please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that he may have in his possession?
From the mayor to the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home Road Charter, I am today transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills: Bill numbers 23007, 230033, 230034, 230035, and 230049. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body. A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, D's conveying fee simple title, to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the Second Councilmanic District. And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, D's conveying fee simple title, to 3903 Wallace Street in the Third Councilmanic District, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our communications, and our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. Mrs. Decker, will you please read the titles of the bills and resolutions that are being offered by our members today?
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers an ordinance amending Section 2304 entitled "Compensation for Members of Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Councils by Revising the Compensation for Members of the Environmental Justice Advisory Commission."
For the committee?
Councilman Thomas offers a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the Philadelphia Association of Black Journalists for celebrating the organization's 50th year, representing the black media industry professionals of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar?
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week Derek Copes on the success of his business, Best Hands Mobile Detailing, and for his constant efforts to make the detailing business more accessible through his social media outreach efforts.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, colleagues. Thank you, Council President. I want to first thank my colleagues, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson and Councilmember Johnson for co-introducing the resolution today to honor a sector of journalism as it relates to black journalists all across the city of Philadelphia for celebrating their 20th year anniversary. And I want to give a special shout out to the president of the organization, Mr. Ernest Owens, whose husband actually worked for my sister colleague to the right, for his first book that he authored this week, "The Case for Cancel Culture," which is an amazing text, is getting great reviews, and overall, just proud of his progress as it relates to what he's done from the time I've seen him come into this industry nearly a decade ago to where he is now. Councilmember Jones, our majority leader, actually acknowledged him a little while back as it relates to some of the heroes that he had recognized for Black History Month. So as we are here on the last Thursday in Black History Month, what better organization to honor than a black journalist across the city of Philadelphia? So all of my colleagues who co-sponsored the resolution, thank you, but a special thank you to Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for co-introducing the resolution with me today. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be on today's final passes' calendar.
Councilman Jones offers three bills and three resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, an ordinance authorizing revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 125 by placing on the city plan Boston Place from 10th Street to 11th Street north of York Street. Also, on behalf of Council President Clark, an ordinance authorizing the paving of Boston Place from 10th Street to 11th Street. And on his own behalf, an ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on both sides of 66th Street between Morris Park Road and Sherwood Road.
Those three bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And on behalf of Council President Clark, a privileged resolution mourning the life, honoring the memory, and enshrining the legacy of Temple University Police Officer Christopher David Fitzgerald, who tragically fell in the line of duty on February 18, 2023.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the record that was introduced by you, but it was co-sponsored by all members of City Council, and thank him for his service.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll have that on today's final passes' calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
I agree with Councilmember Jones. Council President, thank you for your leadership on this, and we mourn the loss. A couple seconds ago, I recognized the Association of Black Journalists, and the president just walked in. Can we, President Ernest Owens, can you just stand up real quick so we can just give you a round of applause on behalf of the Philadelphia Association of Black Journalists? We want to thank all of the black journalists and recognize that organization and the work that's being done on behalf of Communities of Color for Black History Month. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. I'd like to make note that Mr. Owens was actually one of the first members of the City Council Fellows Program, and little did we know. Congratulations, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Jones also offers a non-privileged resolution also naming North 41st Street between Parkside Avenue and South Concourse Drive as Barbara Daniel Cox Way.
To next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming the 5900 Block of Media Street as James Rice Way.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers one bill and two resolutions entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations in the Vicinity of Midland Street and South 20th Street, Between Wolf Street and Jackson Street, South 18th Street and Snyder Avenue, Mole Street Between Moore Street and McKean Street, Carlisle Street and Jackson Street, Rosewood Street and Tasker Street."
For the committee?
And a privileged resolution designating March 8, 2023, as Joe Frazier Day in the city of Philadelphia in honor and recognition of spoken Joe Frazier's heavyweight championship victory over Muhammad Ali in the fight of the century.
For the committee?
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, D's conveying fee simple title, to 1728 Federal Street, 1213 South Bonsall Street, 2114 Manton Street, 1303 South 23rd Street, and 1148 South Cleveland Street in the Second Councilmanic District.
That will be on next week's calendar, and the previous resolution will be on this week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gaudier offers a non-privileged resolution renaming the 4900 Block of Walnut Street Paul L. Robeson Way.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman O'Neill offers an ordinance amending Section 14600 of the Philadelphia Code Use Regulations to clarify that the sale of marijuana for recreational use is not included in the medical marijuana dispensary use category.
For the committee?
There are nowhere the bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. And our next order of business is reports from committees, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for report from the Committee on Law and Government.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Law and Government reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, would you please read that report?
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee on Law and Government, to which is referred Bill Number 220736, entitled "An Ordinance Amending Section 211203 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled 'Appointments to Citizens' Police Oversight Commission by Revising Prohibited Activities for Commissioners, All Under Certain Terms and Conditions, Respectfully Reports It As Considered The Same, and Returns the Attached Bill to Council With a Favorable Recommendation."
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 220736.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second, that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 220736, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee, and our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had their first reading. They will be on our second reading and final passes' calendar at our next session of council. Is there no additional bills on the first reading calendar? The Chair recognizes Councilman Jones. What are the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passes' calendar today?
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from second reading and final passes' calendars today. Numbers: 230110, 220419, and 220845. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. We will now consider our public comment session before considering these bills and resolutions. So your public comment session must concern matters on the second reading and final passes' calendar at today's session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already done so, you may sign up now at the table outside of the council chambers with the sergeant of arms. Once you've signed up, you will be placed in the order of which you have signed up on the sign-up sheet. Today, you will have three minutes to testify, so please adjust your testimony to reflect the three-minute limit. In order to be fair, we anticipate that we will hold all individuals to the time limit to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to speak this on the list today. When you approach the podium, there will be a device. On that device, when the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to your guidelines and conclude your remarks. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, can you please call the first name on the list?
The first speaker, Mr. President, is Kenneth Wood, commenting on 210800.
Good morning. My name is Kenneth Wood. Thank you for the opportunity to give my opinion today. I'm 60-year-plus resident of the city of Philadelphia, and I'm here concerning Bill Number 210800 over parking. I'm concerned about the communities, particularly mine. I'm in the Kensington section, which is being told now we're Orca, Old Richmond Civic Association. The parking is so bad now in our community, and we keep bringing it up with the zoning board every time there's another development. Our community is so overdeveloped that it's just too dense. We've been to the zoning board and spoke with them, and the chair, Frank DeChico, told me that I need to learn how to deal with it, with the congestion, with the parking and everything that's going on. And I tried to explain to him, no, he's in a position where he can fix that. He could stop this overdevelopment. Right now, with the parking that's going on, we got out-of-state work vehicles being parked overnight on my block from Delaware, New Jersey, New York. They're commercial vehicles, and nothing's being done about it. There's people elderly who are disabled who are being pushed off of the handicap spots now, and the ones that are able to keep it are being forced to go every two years and go through the wringer again, have to come down here and appear to get that parking. I feel that us people that have been here for 50, 60, 70 years and built this city should be able to have parking. The elderly have to go to doctor's appointments and food shopping and come home, and they have to park four or five blocks away from their home, and it's just not right. Our bike-riding days are over with. We can't ride bikes anymore. So I feel there should be more emphasis on helping us out with that situation. Like I said, us elderly are being pushed out, is my opinion, and it's not fair and it's not right. I can't help it if I can't afford an $800,000, $900,000 home that has off-street parking. I just can't help that, and it's not fair that because I can't do that, that I feel that I'm being pushed out of my own community that I've lived in for 60-plus years, and it's just not right. That needs to be addressed with the parking before we're giving other parking to other people that may not even live in this city or this state. And before my time is up, I'd like to address the Kensington area, Kensington and Allegheny. That's a humanitarian crisis up there right now, and it should be addressed. That's been going on for 25 years now. The largest open drug market in the east coast of this country, and probably the largest in this country, has been allowed to happen like that. That's just a disgrace. Those people up there need help, and that needs to be addressed. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Michelle Belser, commenting on 230110.
Good morning. Can I take this off for a minute? Okay. Okay.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Belser. Oh, okay. Reservation, Resolution Number 220865. I would like to thank everyone for the award I will be receiving today. I'm humble, and I'm greatly honored. I want to thank all of my constituents, the youth, the seniors, the 100 Block of East Colonial Street, which is my family, that gives me so much love and support, and the entire community that I live in. I'm also committed to continuing my work for the great city that I live in, of Philadelphia. I would like to thank everybody here, and I would like to continue working, and thanks everybody for their support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Catrice Cheaton, commenting on 210396.
Hello.
Good morning.
My name is Catrice Cheaton. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm talking about 210396. I think you should have actually a permanent stay on all mortgage or tax foreclosure sales. Like I mentioned before, we were legally evicted from our home over 34, about 32 days ago. We still haven't gotten back to our home. The illegal eviction was done to cover for an attempt at human trafficking in our lives, which will increase if you continue to let people get their homes sold because they missed the mortgage payment or get foreclosed on. You don't have the capacity to deal with more people being homeless or unhoused. The homeless service can barely handle it now. They have their own trafficking problems within that service. The next place these people are going to end up is the hospital system, which is where we ended up at recently, in this city and around surrounding areas. A lot of hospitals did not do proper care of me, so I had to go to different places. That's why it took me a little while to walk up here, because I've been injured from being unhoused illegally. With that being said, that's going to feed the trafficking system, particularly Oregon trafficking system that we found out about at your hospitals. So you're endangering people's lives if they're not housed. Health and housing go hand in hand. Because I'm out here illegally unhoused because of what happened and hasn't been handled properly, and the eviction court system is covering up for trafficking ring there, I now have decreased health. Had I been able to get back home, and I petitioned to go back home, and my brother as well, a couple weeks ago, none of this would have happened. So I don't know how you can, how the sheriffs of...
And this bill will be on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Johnson for a report from the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities has put out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities, to which is referred Bill number 220810, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Procurement Commissioner to Enter into Agreements to Purchase Electricity, Natural Gas, and Motor Fuel for Use by the City and City Facilities and Vehicles, Including Agreements That Obligate Payment for Delivery of Such Energy Supplies in Future Fiscal Years." Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill number 220810.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills number 220810. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports on committee, and our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had their first reading. They will be on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. Is there no additional bills on the first reading calendar? The chair recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 230110, 220419, and 220845. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. We will now consider our public comment session before considering these bills and resolutions. So your public comment session must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendar at today's session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already done so, you may sign up now at the table outside of the council chambers with the Sergeant of Arms. Once you've signed up, you will be placed in the order of which you have signed up on the signup sheet. Today, you will have three minutes to testify, so please adjust your testimony to reflect the three-minute limit. In order to be fair, we anticipate that we will hold all individuals to the time limit to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to speak this on the list today. When you approach the podium, there will be a device. On that device, when the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to your guidelines and conclude your remarks. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, can you please call the first name on the list?
The first speaker, Mr. President, is Kenneth Wood, commenting on 210800.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Kenneth Wood. Thank you for the opportunity to give my opinion today. I'm 60-year-plus resident of the city of Philadelphia, and I'm here concerning Bill number 210800 over parking. I'm concerned about the communities, particularly mine. I'm in the Kensington section, which is being told now we're Orca, Old Richmond Civic Association. The parking is so bad now in our community, and we keep bringing it up with the zoning board every time there's another development. Our community is so overdeveloped that it's just too dense. We've been to the zoning board and spoke with them, and the chair, Frank DeChico, told me that I needed to learn how to deal with it, with the congestion, with the parking and everything that's going on. And I tried to explain to him, no, he's in a position where he can fix that. He could stop this overdevelopment. Right now, with the parking that's going on, we got out-of-state work vehicles being parked overnight on my block from Delaware, New Jersey, New York. They're commercial vehicles, and nothing's being done about it. There's people, elderly, who are disabled, who are being pushed off of the handicap spots now, and the ones that are able to keep it are being forced to go every two years and go through the wringer again, have to come down here and appear to get that parking. I feel that us people that have been here for 50, 60, 70 years and built this city should be able to have parking. The elderly have to go to doctor's appointments and food shopping and come home, and they have to park four or five blocks away from their home, and it's just not right. Our bike-riding days are over with. We can't ride bikes anymore. So I feel there should be more emphasis on helping us out with that situation. Like I said, us elderly are being pushed out, is my opinion, and it's not fair and it's not right. I can't help but if I can't afford an $800,000, $900,000 home that has off-street parking, I just can't help that, and it's not fair that because I can't do that, that I feel that I'm being pushed out of my own community that I've lived in for 60-plus years. And it's just not right. That needs to be addressed with the parking before we're giving other parking to other people that may not even live in this city or this state. And before my time is up, I'd like to address the Kensington area, Kensington and Allegheny. That's a humanitarian crisis up there right now, and it should be addressed. That's been going on for 25 years now. The largest open drug market in the East Coast of this country, and probably the largest in this country, has been allowed to happen like that. That's just a disgrace. Those people up there need help, and that needs to be addressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Michelle Belser, commenting on 230110.
Can I take this off for a minute? Okay. Okay. Good morning. My name is Michelle Belser. Oh, okay. Resolution number 220865. I would like to thank everyone for the award I will be receiving today. I'm humbled, and I'm greatly honored. I want to thank all of my constituents, the youth, the seniors, the 100 block of East Colonial Street, which is my family, that gives me so much love and support, and the entire community that I live in. I'm also committed to continuing my work for the great city that I live in of Philadelphia. I would like to thank everybody here, and I would like to continue working, and thanks everybody for their support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Catrice Cheaton, commenting on 210396.
Good morning.
My name is Catrice Cheaton. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm talking about 210396. I think you should have actually a permanent stay on all mortgage or tax foreclosure sales. Like I mentioned before, we were legally evicted from our home over 34, about 32 days ago. We still haven't gotten back to our home. The illegal eviction was done to cover for attempt of human trafficking in our lives, which will increase if you continue to let people get their homes sold because they missed the mortgage payment or get foreclosed on. You don't have the capacity to deal with more people being homeless or unhoused. The homeless service can barely handle it now. They have their own trafficking problems within that service. The next place these people are going to end up is the hospital system, which is where we ended up at recently, in this city and around surrounding areas. A lot of hospitals did not do proper care of me, so I had to go to different places. That's why it took me a little while to walk up here, because I've been injured from being unhoused illegally. With that being said, that's going to feed the trafficking system, particularly Oregon trafficking system that we found out about at your hospitals. So you're endangering people's lives if they're not housed. Health and housing go hand in hand. Because I'm out here illegally unhoused because of what happened and hasn't been handled properly, and eviction course system is covering up for trafficking ring there, I now have decreased health. Had I been able to get back home, and I petitioned to go back home, and my brother as well, a couple of weeks ago, none of this would have happened. So I don't know how the Sheriff's Department can handle doing mortgages and tax foreclosure sales when they don't even handle the eviction properly. So you're going to have lots of lawsuits on your hands, Scott said, because of this behavior. You cannot handle that. It's going to bank with the city in five months, Scott said. You need to get a handle on it, not on the people, we're not the problem, on the system that abuse this store is of. Okay? So that you don't keep having the trafficking ring getting fed. Because a lot of children are being hurt in the trafficking ring as well, and disabled people. But you need to get a handle on it. There's no reason why she's standing here today talking about I don't have my home yet for 32 days.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Ernest Owens.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Ernest Owens. I'm the president of the Philadelphia Association of Black Journalists. I'm not here in my capacity as a journalist or reporter today, but as a member, on behalf of the Philadelphia Association of Black Journalists, to thank council member Isaiah Thomas and the co-authors, Catherine Gilmore Richardson and, of course, Kenyatta Johnson, for this resolution that recognizes us. This year, we're starting our 50th anniversary celebration as the nation's first black association of journalists in the country. Thank you. We predate the National Association of Black Journalists, which a lot of people do not know. I'm serving him to my second term, so you know, I know what it feels like to be an incumbent. Well, by popular vote, no challengers. So I'm super excited to be on this side of the end. I was here 10 years ago in 2013 as a communications fellow here at the city council, and since I've become a journalist and have covered city council in different ways. But in addition to the support, you know, people clap and they support PABJ. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and we are doing really well, but we can do better, and we would love to see more support from our allies and our partners in the community to support the work that we do. We're training the next leadership of black journalists across the region. I wouldn't be where I'm at without the Philadelphia Association of Black Journalists. That's the reason why I stayed in this city and didn't go off to New York or LA and other places. It was the training, the mentorship, the workshops we do. You know, I just left Temple University and gave a student a $10,000 scholarship in partnership with CBS3. It's that kind of work that we're doing to make sure that we believe in diversity in the media. We know how important it is to have newsrooms that reflect this room, but it doesn't. The newsrooms don't reflect this room that reflects council and our community and our city, and we've been advocating for that because we know how important it is to tell these stories accurately, and so they reflect the newsrooms that we're in. And so we're not asking you all just to give us resolutions. That's beautiful, but we would love more actual investment, investment into the programs and things that we do, because we can't do this, you know, if we want to make the impact that we want to make, it's going to take a lot of work. But before I conclude, because I know I can ramble and ramble, you can hear my podcasts and everything else, I got a book out and all that good stuff. It's on the charts on Amazon, it's number one right now on Amazon. But what I will emphasize, though, this is a really important call to action. For the past year, we've been asking to have a meeting with the Philadelphia Inquirer. Their editor-in-chief, which is Gabe Escobar, and their publisher, Lisa Hughes, have been refusing to have a meeting with us for several months. We, a couple of years ago, had proposed a plan to improve the diversity and equity inclusion issues that's been happening at the Inquirer. You all have seen it. We have been fighting to get more representation across. You know, I have been a black reporter covering politics in this city, and it's unfortunate that there's not that many people that look like me that cover these issues that impact the community. You all see it when you see the headlines there. You all see it in the coverage. It's hard to deny the impact. Oh, I'll wrap it up. So what my call to action would be is just to say, please urge them to have a meeting with us. Please tell them, why aren't you having a meeting with the leadership of the Philadelphia Association of Black Journalists? Do not let them act like we're not doing it. We've given them thumbs-down awards. We've done everything in our power to try to handle this. So we're urging the community and our elected officials and others to demand diversity, equity, inclusion in our newsrooms. So please urge Gabe Escobar and, of course, Lisa Hughes, who are the publishers there, who are getting public support from institutions like the Lindfett Institute, ask their board chair people, ask their board, we have people that you all know that fund your campaigns and support your efforts, to make sure that they have that meeting with us, because if they don't, you're going to continue to get the mediocre coverage that you've been seeing there. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Lynn Landis, commenting on 210913.
Good morning. I'm Lynn Landis. I support resolution 210913, but today I'm also here to talk about pit bull attacks. This week, an FBI agent shot and killed a pit bull that had attacked her dog. The next day, there was a small protest outside of FBI offices in Philadelphia, but there was one person there in support of her action, my son Mitch. And that's because on November 12, 2019, our dog Scooter was killed by a pit bull near 11th and Spruce Streets. Mitch was walking our three small dogs that evening when a pit bull got loose from its owner and attacked Scooter. Our 36-year-old son beat on that pit bull with his fists for several minutes while others were kicking it, but the pit bull would not release our dog. Finally, someone came by with a metal-tipped walking stick and wedged it behind the dog's teeth to unlock its jaw, but by then it was too late. Scooter died of his injuries that night. This is not an isolated incident. A neighbor of ours was chased by a pit bull on Benjamin Franklin Parkway just two weeks ago. He had to jump on top of a car to get away from it. Every week across the country, adults, children, pets, and even livestock are attacked by pit bulls. This is why the police and military do not use pit bulls. They are simply too dangerous and can't be trusted. Once they lock onto a target, they have no off switch and won't let go. We believe that pit bulls should be banned in Philadelphia. Pit bulls are already banned in 53 countries. In the United States, pit bulls are banned in over 1,100 cities, 297 military bases, and 23 Indian reservations. Many housing authorities ban pit bulls, including New York City. At the very least, all pit bulls should be muzzled, and dog shelters should not adopt out pit bulls. The pit bull that got shot this week and the pit bull that killed our dog were both rescues. It's time to end this deadly practice and phase out this deadly breed. If pit bulls are too dangerous for the military and the police, then they're too dangerous for our neighborhoods. Thank you. You can learn more at bannedpitbulls.org. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Carlton Williams, commenting on 230110.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Council President and the Honorable Members of City Council. My name is Carlton Williams. I am the Streets Commissioner for the City of Philadelphia, but I come today wearing a different hat as the president of the Oak Lane Youth Association, and I want to thank Council Member Phillips for resolution 230110 honoring the Oak Lane Youth Association for the work that we've done in our community. For over 50 years, Oak Lane Youth Association has served young people between the ages of five to 16 years of age, and we have been in multiple competitions throughout the city and around the country. But the most important role that this program plays is helping to save lives of young people. It is one anti-violence program that works, and so many others. I joke so much with council members Jones and council members Johnson and so many other council members about the programs that they sponsor, including the Overbrook Monarchs and the South Philly Hurricanes, the South Philly Sharks, and so many others, the North Philly Aztecs. I can tell you, Council President and council members, that this is one truly anti-violence program that is saving the lives of young people. It keeps them involved in positive productive activities. It helps out with childhood obesity, and it certainly supports our anti-violence prevention initiatives when it comes down to the lives of young people who are constantly dying on the streets of Philadelphia today. We continuously want to join these other programs to support our youth. And to all the council members, we thank you for your support, whether it's through the Philadelphia Activity Fund or your investments in parks and recreation centers. You save lives, and these programs are making a huge difference. And on behalf of the entire Oak Lane Youth Association and all of the young people we serve, thank you, Council Member Phillips, for your resolution honoring our board members. I have two board members that are here with me today, Mr. Levann White and Mr. Greg Bowler. They've all volunteered for the Oak Lane Youth Association for a long time. I'm not just the president, I was a member. I started Oak Lane in 1979 as a football player. I became a coach and became the president, and for over the last couple of years, I could truly say that if it wasn't for this youth program, I probably wouldn't be here today, and I certainly wouldn't be the Streets Commissioner for the City of Philadelphia. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Actually, that's more important than your day job of getting the trash picked up on town. Thank you for your service. We really appreciate it.
The next speaker is Obona Higgins.
Councilman Johnson, if you want to be ready.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I just want to also take a moment to acknowledge Councilmember Anthony Phillips for honoring the Oak Lane Youth Association, and I just wanted to just say that the leadership of Carlton Williams and his team is very, very exceptional. He didn't mention that several different times they would come down to South Philadelphia, and they would actually beat the South Philadelphia Hurricanes, but nevertheless, it's a friendly competition, because at the end of the day, it's all about saving our young people. And if you come out on any given Saturday or any given day when these young people are playing games, you know for a fact that beyond the children who are participating, you have parents who are volunteering, you have cheerleaders, you have coaches, and that's all about making sure our young people have safe haven so they don't get involved in things that are negative, and most importantly, they have safe environments to enjoy themselves. I didn't want to take this moment and not acknowledge y'all's hard work and y'all's good work that y'all are doing up there in the Great Northwest, so congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Obona Higgins. I'm speaking on this bill about unethical practices, banking practices of Wells Fargo in regards to naming rights of Comcast Spectacore. So of course, you know, if someone or organization is being unethical, you know, they shouldn't have the privilege of having naming rights. But I also think that, oh, I want to give you a definition. Definition of a politician is one who manages people, essentially, one who can manage people. And when we look around this city, we see a lot of mismanagement going on. Speaking, you know, with my man, the Commissioner, we look at how dirty the streets of Philadelphia are. Mismanagement. We look at the potholes in this city. Mismanagement. We look at the violence and the crime in this city. Mismanagement. So my question is, what's the correct way, what's the correct process to have a council member arrested for impersonating a council member? Because in my opinion, you guys are dropping the ball. What are you doing to speak to these issues and to not only address the issues, but to solve the issues? The police officer who was murdered, rest in peace to him, and the Fitzgerald family, how did this guy come from Montgomery County with a gun to kill one of our police officers? The truth of the matter is that there are a lot of guns coming from the counties, killing people in Philadelphia, being distributed to people in Philadelphia. What are you doing about that, City Council? I come here every week, and all you guys do is look at me, speak, and listen to my speech. Few of you comment to me, but you've never said, you know what, let's talk to Obona Higgins, because he is making a lot of sense, and maybe he could just help us, you know, to solve some of these problems. Because the reality is, the people in Philadelphia, they don't like you guys. I'm going out getting petitions, and they flagging me, getting petitions signed, they flagging me saying, you know what, brother? You seem like a nice guy, but you're going to be just like them crooks and them phonies and them frauds. I'm not signing your petition. You're setting a bad example for the City of Philadelphia to even want to be engaged and involved in the political process. We, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, you're encouraging people not to be involved.
Chair recognizes Councilman Phillips. Listen, I, every single week, you come here, and I want to be the first to say on record that I've offered time for us to meet, and I want to make sure that's very true, because I believe in collaboration, and I believe that everyone has a right to be able to bring ideas, solutions to the table, and us to work together. So again, I welcome a meeting for us to meet and connect and come up with the best solutions for the City of Philadelphia, because just like you and many of us in this, all of us in this room, we care. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
The final speaker is Sheriff Rochelle Bilal.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning, Council President. I'm Rochelle Bilal, sheriff for the city and county of Philadelphia. Though our hearts are heavy, this week Fitzgerald was a deputy sheriff from 2019 until he went over to Temple. I want to thank you for introducing the bill to recognize him and ask everybody to support his family during this time, because we are all feeling it. I just wanted to say thank you, and we appreciate all that y'all doing. Thanks, you council.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Sheriff.
There are no other speakers on the final, on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, this for the record, the public comment session, according to our rules, must pertain to what's on the final passage calendar. I've been kind of looking the other way while people have stated a particular bill number but segwayed into a whole different conversation. So I want to get back to kind of enforcing that whole issue with respect to speaking on public comment about what's actually on the calendar. So this, for the record, a little bit of notice. Thank you. That concludes our public comment session. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of the resolution, number 230110.
Our resolution honoring Eric Bryce, Corey Brown, Michelle Belser, and the Board of Directors of the Old Oak Lane Youth Association as heroes of the Ninth Council District for their laudable service to the community.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Phillips.
Good morning, Council President. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. In high school, I wrote a speech for a competition called, a forum called Speech debate, and for an entire year, I recited this speech, and it was entitled, "Reluctant Leadership." In the speech, I noted that the best leaders are reluctant leaders. Those are individuals who don't desire the spotlight, but when called to lead, they lead because they understand the importance of service and excellence and why leadership is needed at that very moment. This month, I decided, and also going into the new calendar months, I will be honoring people throughout the Ninth District who reflect this idea and concept around reluctant leadership. And today, we have our Ninth District heroes today. If we can have the Oak Lane Youth Association stand and Ms. Michelle Belser, who's here today. Please continue to stand. Last week, I was proud to introduce this resolution, which is on today's final passage calendar, honoring Eric Bryce, Corey Brown, Michelle Belser, and the Board of Directors of the Oak Lane Youth Association as heroes of the Ninth District, as heroes of the Ninth District. For 28 years, Eric Bryce has been a fervent community strategist and civic empowerment advocate. He plays a vital role in our community. He always holds all empowerment advocate. He plays a vital role in our community. He always holds all of us accountable to being able to push an agenda for the people of our district and beyond. Mr. Bryce serves on the Board of Directors for the 35th District Town Watch, the Oak Lane Community Actions Association, and the Logan Civic Association. He is a thought leader in our community, and he always provides some of the best ideas. No matter what the circumstance is, he pushes you to be great when it comes to community action. Cory Brown serves as the President of the Longcrest Lions. For over 20 years, Mr. Brown has been a leader in promoting youth sports, including football, baseball, cheerleading, and basketball. In a day of rising violence among our youth, it's important to supply them with productive recreation, and Cory Brown dedicates himself to that. Michelle Belzer, who is here today, who is a personal hero of mine. Pete Lyde, who is the 61st Ward Leader, says that Michelle, she's a fighter who will always keep the community first. She's always thinking about how, she's always thinking about that leadership is important for not her, but for others, and she's always constantly being one of the best committee persons in the 61st, Pete says. Ms. Belzer even came in second place in the City of Philadelphia's Clean Block Competition in 2021. She organizes block cleanups for her neighborhood. She organizes meetups for elected officials to connect with neighbors. She's also dedicated to decoratives throughout every season in her neighborhood. She is the epitome of excellence when it comes to community organizing, and we thank her for all of the work that she's done with beautifying our neighborhoods. Our Representative Bellman from Alany has said about Ms. Belzer, she exemplifies service and leadership, and her work as a block agent should be epitomized and recognized throughout the City of Philadelphia in a way that it should be modeled throughout many, many neighborhoods. So thank you, Ms. Belzer. And lastly, the Board of Directors of the Oak Lane Youth Association, Carlton Williams, Levann White, Tenay Robinson, Dawn Heath Carver, Norma Williams, Greg Bowler, Kimberly Jamison, and Leon Jones, they volunteer their time to ensure that 350 youth participants have fun engaging in programming of football, baseball, basketball, cheerleading, and track and field. The Association was established over 50 years ago in 1971, and is being carried on by a board that is dedicated to serving youth. The Ninth District Heroes are neighbors who dedicate themselves to the betterment of their neighborhoods. Though they do much of their work and contribute to their communities, they are often unsung and underappreciated. And as the Ninth District Councilmember, I'm making it my business to assure that the sincerity of my gratitude for their service is heard loud and clear. So thank you to these heroes. And can we all give a round of applause to the Oak Lane Youth Association? And Ms. Michelle Belzer is a wonderful community organizer. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes...
Yes.
You done?
Yeah, I'm done. Yeah, I moved the adoption of the resolution.
Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and motion is granted. Resolution adopted. Councilman, Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Just want to ask for a moment, a personal privilege to introduce a very, very special guest who's in the City Council chamber today, and that's Septa Bus Operator, Kristi Shields. I would like for him and his dad to please stand up. Last month, Mr. Shields was driving his Route 5 bus when he saw a carjacking happening. He stopped the attempted carjacking by using his 20-ton bus to block the would-be robbers before yelling out of his window and pressing on the horn. The thwarted thieves took off running. Mr. Shields recalled that after the threat had passed, he exited his bus and went into a nearby bar to ask patrons to keep an eye on the woman until help could arrive. After the incident, Mr. Shields went back to driving his Route 5 bus, picking up and dropping off passengers. He has worked for Septa for more than 18 years. Today, I'll be honoring him as chairperson of the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities in the Mayor's Reception Room at 1:00 P.M. All of you are invited to join us during this ceremonial presentation of the resolution that we all passed unanimously honoring Mr. Kristi Shields. And I just want to say, during this particular time in the City of Philadelphia, we see a whole lot of crime and gun violence day in and day out, and this body has worked diligently and very consistently, day in and day out, to try to eliminate the senseless crime and violence we're seeing here in the City of Philadelphia. But this is a bright spot in our city. This is an opportunity to honor a young man who basically decided to put his life on the line and help a young woman who's in distress. And so I believe if we have more men in the City of Philadelphia like Kristi Shields, we will be a safer city. So with that being said, Mr. Shields, we just want to say thank you. We honor you, and we congratulate you and say keep up the good work. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you, Mr. Shields. We really appreciate your service. Really do. Thank you. Mr. Decker? Please read the title of bill number 220419.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire fee simple title or lesser real estate interest from Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land located in and about the area bounded by 56th Street, Lindbergh Boulevard, 61st Street, Passyunk Avenue, and the Schuylkill River, and to grant an easement to paid-for access across the parcel for the construction and maintenance of an accessway.
Thank you. This bill had been read on two different days. Your question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Brooks, Councilman Driscoll, Councilwoman Gauthier, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson, Councilman Harity, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Lozada, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman Phillips, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Thomas, Councilwoman Vaughn, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15, and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 220845.
An ordinance renaming and designating the area of land bounded by 54th Street, Winfield Avenue, and Woodbine Avenue as the Winfield Veterans Memorial.
This bill had been read on two different days. Your question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Brooks, Councilman Driscoll, Councilwoman Gauthier, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thanks and appreciation, Councilwoman Jones.
Councilman Harity, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones.
Reciprocating back to...
Aye.
Councilwoman Lozada, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman Phillips, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Thomas, Councilwoman Vaughn, Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are 15, and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
Our resolution honoring and congratulating the Philadelphia Association of Black Journalists for celebrating the organization's 50th year representing the black media industry professionals of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair, I'm sorry.
Introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week Derek Copes on the success of his business Best Hands Mobile Detailing, and for his constant efforts to make the detailing business more accessible through his social media outreach efforts, introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to commend Derek for the great work that he's done. Someone who's formerly incarcerated, who has been an example in a successful business in the City of Philadelphia, has clientele such as James Harden as well as Tyrese Maxey, and he uses his nonprofit for the dopest detailer, using his words, to make the detailing industry accessible to felons as well as to the city's youth. So I want to thank Derek and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution mourning the life, honoring the memory, and enshrining the legacy of Temple University Police Officer Christopher David Fitzgerald, who tragically fell in the line of duty on February 18, 2023, introduced today by Councilman Jones on behalf of Council President Clark and all members of council.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we acknowledge this by standing recognition?
Absolutely.
And a resolution designating March 8, 2023, as Joe Frazier Day in the City of Philadelphia, in honor and recognition of Smokin' Joe Frazier's heavyweight championship victory over Muhammad Ali in the fight of the century, introduced today by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our calendar for today. We will now move to our speeches. Any speeches on behalf of the minority, seeing none. Speeches on behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we come to the final week of February and recognize the accomplishments of African-Americans in history, world history, American history, Philadelphia history, I want us rise to acknowledge one Philadelphian that has, before the Internet, before social media, made an impression internationally on the psyche of all people, not just black people, W.E.B. Du Bois. W.E.B. Du Bois moved to Philadelphia, raised, born in Massachusetts. He came here and studied, and he did the first official documented study of the Negro condition in America. It was called the Philadelphia Negro. Many of you will remember that, in that he came up with a concept called the Talented Tenth, which simply said that 10% of the population would go on to be leadership. He often debated with his colleagues about whether we should be a class of workers and trades, Jimmy Harity would be able to do that. But he said that some of that 10% should be refined to the degrees of fine arts and others. He went on to become the first Ph.D. from Harvard University of African-American descent. That's the other Yale, Member Phillips. And his contributions echo throughout our history. And when we recognize the podcasters and the black journalists, it is from his spirit that we do so, because their writings, their findings echo throughout history, allowing us to set a standard, to understand where we come from, so that we recognize where we are, and more importantly, to determine where we can go as a society. I think it's important that the second publication that stands out is the soul of black folk. When you start to think about, particularly back then, how to take deeper dives, how to quantify what the impacts of America has been, both on our race, culture, but the contributions of our culture to America, you understand how significant W.E.B. Du Bois was. And finally, there would be no NAACP, but for his involvement in the Niagara movement, to create an ongoing association that stepped up to the plate to raise and elevate the issues of the Negro, then called the Negro, in the United States. So as we conclude Black History Month, we stand on the shoulders of giants to prefer us for the present, to project us into the future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gauthier.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to take this opportunity to warn about a brewing injustice. The Nutter administration spent $52 million in taxpayer dollars to turn 4601 Market Street into the new Philadelphia Police Headquarters. After the city decided to use the old Enquirer Building for this purpose instead, the Kenny administration sold 4601 Market to Ironstone Real Estate Partners in 2019 at a steal, with an agreement in place that the developer would convert the site into a public health campus. But this past summer, news broke that Ironstone plans to build 1,240 market-rate housing units on the land, which was not a part of the agreement subject to public review. Let me be clear. I support residential development at 4601 Market because of its proximity to high-quality jobs, transit, and community resources. But I do not support building a luxury market-rate housing complex unaffordable to neighbors on land the city invested millions of taxpayer dollars into. The city expressed its concerns to Ironstone months ago, at which point, they said that they are exploring their ability to include affordable housing. Ironstone continues to say this, but has refused to take actions that prove this is more than just words. So now I want to speak directly to Ironstone. The city put its faith in you to steward this historic site into a community-oriented future. It is time to prove that this faith was not misplaced. Withdraw your zoning application and start the process over in concert with the city, per the agreement of sale. Formally commit to keeping at least 20% of your proposed homes affordable to residents, earning 40% of the area median income, as required by my mixed-income neighborhoods overlay. Let me put this expectation into perspective for you. The mint overlay requires that 20% of homes remain affordable to single-person households earning about $30,000, which is the average income on the blocks surrounding 4601 Market. So when you refuse to take concrete steps to include affordable housing, you refuse neighbors the opportunity to remain in the amenity-rich neighborhoods their families have called home for generations. As the city endures the worst housing affordability crisis we have ever seen, I refuse to sit idly by while you ignore your responsibility to be a part of the solution. And Ironstone, although I am speaking to you today as a representative, this is about the entire west and southwest community, and we will see you at the public meeting on March 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Are there any additional speeches on behalf of the minority or majority? There being none. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the council stand adjourned until Thursday, March 2, 2023, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved and second. The council stand adjourned until Thursday, March 2, 2023, 10:00 a.m. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carried. Thank you all very much. motion carried. Thank you all very much.